Yeah, Bill Mott, that's my book, Nebraska Rural Resident. Before you sign the contract with West Central, I'd like to have Ted in here. He guaranteed it was a hundred percent not gonna be used for nuisance abatement. I was hoping you'd get you guys to sign a resolution saying that you're a hundred percent not gonna use West Central for nuisance abatement from the county of Redwood. And put that on the record that it's signed and it will not be used for that.
I'm gonna respond to that, Bill, okay? We're not gonna give them the cross back report. WCND does not do nuisance abatement in rural areas, only municipal areas, okay? Only, so it's not an issue.
Well, I understand that, but I would like to, you said it verbally, both of you guaranteed it a hundred percent, you would not?
We'll have a representative here.
What?
There will, a representative from WCND will be here today.
Yeah.
We'll ask him, I'll ask him, okay?
Well, I'm sure you don't have to use all the services, but you have to use the services.
They don't even offer them for county residents, that's what I'm trying to tell you, I've been trying to tell you that all along, okay? So, it's not a possibility anyway, even if we wanted to, they don't do that in the rural areas, only municipalities. So, it's kind of a new issue as far as county.
Okay.
Okay?
But I'd still like to have something on the record about that if you're doing it.
When he's here, I'll ask him the question, okay, about that, alright? Would that be alright?
Well, yeah, that'd be alright, but I'd still like to have you guarantee it like you a hundred percent, you said you wouldn't be used that way, if it could be.
Alright, we'll look into it, Bill.
That was my concern, how that is gonna hold your noses to the grindstone and get you to...
You do that, you do that.
Make a commitment and with a resolution that you won't use it that way.
I guess that's a possibility, it's kind of a new issue, but it gets us possibility.
Yeah, I got it, Bill.
Okay, Bill?
At the last meeting when I was here, Mr. Danz asked me, you know, when you voted on that nuisance abatement?
No, we did not vote on nuisance abatement.
When we talked about that nuisance abatement, that we were gonna, you could hire a person with a comprehensive plan, and I think they said the figure was fifty thousand, and I think the figure with the group from Ogalala was thirty thousand.
Twenty-five.
And, twenty-five? And he asked me the question, which would you take? And I couldn't answer that then, but I can answer it today.
Okay.
So, this would be how, I'm gonna talk about the cost. January twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three, I sent this letter to the Nebraska Legislature. The greatest generation before us thought us freedom isn't free. Our patriotic duty is to uphold and defend the Constitution, such as free speech. Cost, someone says something we don't like. Religion, cost, a belief some disagree with. Right to bear arms, and I definitely believe this in my heart. The right to bear arms, the founding fathers thought there would be wars and rumors of wars. That's why we got the Second Amendment. In twenty-twenty-three, war clouds circle our country and the world from east to west. Cost, crying with guns and soldiers who get hurt and die for our freedom. Right to vote, cost, possible fraud, and make sure everyone has the right to vote. Now, back to this comprehensive plan, fifty thousand, the other one, twenty-five thousand. The Fourth Amendment, which I gotta add here, is unreasonable search of possessions. And that's the way I feel about the Ogalala group. So, on that, we got the right to bear arms, and that costs millions of dollars every year, look at the shootings going on. And here, we're talking about upholding the Fourth Amendment on unreasonable searches. You're only talking twenty-five thousand. So, you would automatically, I would go with the thirty thousand to uphold the Constitution, you know? The other group, because I don't think the other group gets in the nuisance abatement. So, I would've went with the cost of thirty thousand. I would've wanted to hire them, because I would've felt I was defending the Fourth Amendment. That's my comment.
Again, Dale, they do not do nuisance abatement in rural areas, I don't know how many times I gotta say that. They do not do them in rural areas, they don't do it.
They do it.
No, they don't, alright, I'll ask, I'll ask him when he comes, I'll ask him.
Hey, wait, 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 you disagree with me, like you said, you got a heavy agenda. You disagree with me, I disagree with you, drop it.
Okay, we will drop it.
Because you've got a busy agenda, and I don't wanna slow it down. But I'm telling you, this is a Fourth Amendment issue, and you hired somebody, you threw away your freedom by hiring somebody for a less figure when you should've went with the fifty thousand. I just told you about the Second Amendment. We got people killed, millions of dollars every year, and the taxpayers is willing to put up with that. And they would've put up with you hiring that other group for fifty thousand, because that's defending the Constitution. Now, you disagree with me, that's fine, but you know what this is gonna lead to? It's the Fourth Amendment unreasonable search of possessions. We're gonna have to come up with a brochure now, vote against any elected official or to retain any official in the courthouse who takes an oath of office and who does not support the Fourth Amendment of unreasonable searches. That's what we're gonna have to have, is a brochure that tells the voters how to vote in Redwood County.
That's okay.
Okay.
That's okay. We have to make a decision, we're gonna make a decision.
But anyway, like you said, you disagree.
And I already told you, we'll bring that up to Mr. Gutten when he shows up from the organization. We'll go, we'll ask him the question, and we'll get a result.
Well, Paul Ward can give us a resolution, I don't think so about issue of any.
And I wrote, and I wrote it down.
We don't need a brochure.
Bill's recommendation. Anybody else? Okay. We, with that, this is his comments, we're done with that. Board of Supervision is our next item up to nine fifteen, but we don't have anything on that. So, we have to wait till nine-thirty in order to have a public hearing on the budget. Therefore, I'm gonna jump ahead and try to get some of this other stuff out of the way while we're waiting for the nine-thirty figure to come around. So, I think what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna get right into the consent agenda. We have ten items on the consent agenda, I'm gonna read them on. And we have, number one, approve the minutes, and the Board of Supervision meetings for both the meetings we had the last time, we gotta approve those minutes.
We have to table that one, because Charles wasn't there, and you can't do it by yourself.
Really, Charles? That's right, okay. So, we'll be tabling those minutes, we'll come back to that in a minute, okay? We can approve accounts payable and payroll claims. We have a payroll, we have accounts payable of two-hundred-sixty-five thousand, nine-hundred-two dollars, seventy-three cents. We have payroll of one-sixty-two, eight-seventy-eight, oh-two. We, number three on the consent agenda is accept a gift of twenty-two thousand, one-hundred-sixty-two dollars, seventy-five cents from the Kippeler Foundation, that is a half of the cost for a stall vacuum to clean out the pins out there. The other half of that will be coming out of the arena fund, it will not be coming out of tax dollars. But we do have to approve a gift, county can't receive a gift unless we approve it. We have a chairman's signature, we approve that on the roads and street certification addendum, we have that here. We authorize a chairman's signature on roadway occupancy agreement with McCook Public Power District. This is for, oh, maybe an eighth of a mile on road three-ninety-two up just south of Timmermans. Well, actually, it's right along the side of Timmermans. They're putting in a three-phase line, they're putting in about six foot into our road, so therefore, there's an occupancy agreement for that. We also have one for Gavin Harsh, another roadway occupancy, this is on road four-oh-four. This is just northwest of Bartley, it's on a minimum maintenance road. He's wanting to put a water line across the minimum maintenance road. He owns a pasture on both sides of that road, he wants to run a water line over to the other side for his cattle. And the other one that we have is from Great Plains, there's a new house going in out on road seven-twenty-three. That is just northwest of Indianola, about, I'll say, four miles, maybe five. So, he's gonna need to run fiber optic over to that house. And then we have, number eight on here is approved resolution number one-five-seven-seven, Book twenty-four, page eighty-four. And this is to adopt a twelve-month zoning moratorium on data centers. I will just add a little bit to that. Data centers are something that we don't have anything in our comprehensive plan, so we will be addressing that, but for right now, we're gonna put a moratorium on it, so nobody can issue a conditional use permit. I will, first of all, I will make a motion to table consent item number one, simply because we won't have a forum of commissioners that are present today, that were present the last meeting. So, with that, I'm gonna make a motion to table number one. Do you have a second?
One second.
All favor table number one on that, say aye.
Aye.
That, that number one consent agenda has been tabled until the next meeting. I believe our next meeting is October sixth.
Yes.
I believe, okay. So now, if we don't have the other discussion on those, I need a motion to approve consent items two through ten.
Make a motion to approve consent agenda items two through ten.
And I will second that motion, if there's no further discussion, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Yeah, we got the consent agenda out of the way. Next, I'd like to cover, we have a couple of reports here from the sheriff's office and the clerk's office. Like to take a few minutes to go over those. Thank you. I always look at the sheriff to make sure I'm not on here, see if my name's on here. So far, so good. These are just simply clerks, they're the reports from both offices showing how much they received in fees. Doesn't see you on here so far, Charles.
Yeah.
You're okay.
I'm not done, oh. Yeah, getting his back, Dave, yeah.
Okay, so, we reviewed the sheriff's report, also the clerk's report. Those are revenues that brought in. And I'm gonna take a couple of minutes on all the consent agenda items that we just approved. We have to sign off on them, and I don't have all of them, oh, here, right?
Please.
Oh, I've done that, okay, okay.
Yeah.
So, it'll take us a few minutes to sign all of these, and we have nine of them.
Yeah, all that, please, you can switch, Charles.
Hmm?
And this.
Oh, oh, just put them back in there? Does it matter what order they go back in there?
Oh, that's all that goes in there. Except those go in that basket, the rest of the stuff comes back to you.
Please?
Yeah. Did you get both of them?
I signed that one.
Did you get both of them?
Oh, sorry, I told you.
Mm-hmm.
I told you.
Gotta watch it.
These are just authorization, chairman, so that used to be needed today. He doesn't use products in that season. I should've clarified pending payment on these. I'm gonna save it now, anyway. We are, on these road occupancy claims, these are approved pending payment of the fees to do that, so it'll come back to you. This is just to back them up, so I can get around to... Just do inform everybody, everything else that's on the agenda has time slots on them, so we'll have to wait for, to start with. Don Wilson is the next one, but that's not till nine forty-five.
Next one is the budget hearing.
Hmm?
Next is the budget hearing.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's on the line, but at nine-thirty, we'll go into a public hearing on the budget, but then, I don't know if we'll get it done before nine-thirty.
Sure you will.
Nine forty-five, we're on it.
I wrote you a script.
I don't have a script.
Um, thank you, Bill.
Well, we're gonna skip all this anyway, here, there's your bets.
That's where it came from.
There's your motion, you're making.
You guys are interchangeable.
Hey, oh, and you're okay?
Yeah.
That's good.
I don't know.
Hmm?
Sorry, no.
That's good. How did the joint meeting go the other night?
How was it? Um...
We had too many subjectors.
Oh, there were a lot of questions, and I probably let it go on too long, but people just... It is hard to understand that big of a budget, and need to extend it well.
You know, it's... It's not too big a task to be there. Yeah, I don't want to be there, I think the Kippeler Foundation will go on, so. Good to see you, Ed. One, I recognize you, never met you in person, but I think that's who you are. I now have nine-thirty, we are scheduled to go into a public hearing to hear from the public on the budget. So, I will need a motion to enter into a public hearing.
I'll make it. Make a motion to enter into a public hearing for budget approval?
I, I will second that motion, so if there's no further discussion, all the favor say aye. Aye, motion carried, we're now in a public hearing. I just publicly introduced, I've already introduced the members that are here, the board commissioners that are here. We have guests here also. In this public hearing, anybody is welcome to voice any opinions or suggestions that they might have on our budget. And we will take them into account if we can, some of them we can, some of them we can't. And then, after that, we'll come out of that meeting and, and go ahead and pass the resolutions, hopefully pass the resolutions and approve the budget. So, with that, does anybody have anything that they wanna add in a public hearing as it concerns the budget that we, that we are about to adopt? So, I will just, I will go, I will just, I feel like I should say a couple of things about the budget. We are, we hear every year about profit evaluations and how they keep going up and there isn't anything that the county commissioners could do about that. We are the ones that set the valuations, but we set them according to state law. We do hear protest on that, some of them we can change, sometimes we make mistakes, sometimes we change them, most of the times, we have to stick with what the state's telling us to do. So the budget this year, I don't know if you, everybody's aware of the pink cards. We, as long as I've been here and working on the budgets, we've never had to do a pink card, we've been very fiscal responsible. We, in two thousand and twenty-four, we had a mill levy of point two seven two six zero seven. So if we take our total valuation at that time and take it times that amount, that's per one hundred dollars of valuation. That is, the mill levy is basic percentage. So at that time, we had, like I said, we had a mill levy of point two seven six oh seven. So what we've done this coming year is our valuation did go up a little bit, so about seventeen million, roughly, almost eighteen million. So what we did is we lowered the mill levy, in other words, we've lowered the percentage. So we was able to maintain a very fiscal responsible budget and not have to go over the state mandates for giving out pink cards. Also, we were allowed to go up to, in our case, about six percent increase, we did not do that. We didn't take the full six percent, we didn't have to. We, by doing that, we went under that amount and was able to carry that, that extra amount that we didn't ask for, what our authority was, we was able to carry that forward into the following year, next year, which are basically unused authority. So we have ability to do something next year, but the way it's been going, we had, we was able to do that this year too, but we didn't use none of that unused authority all, either. So we do have a cushion there, if we do, because what we're doing is we're going below what the state authorizes us to do. Does that make sense? I know some of you guys understand that quite well, I said it right. So that's where we're at, so we are going to be looking at, I don't remember the exact figure, but I think it was a hundred and, about a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollar increase on a seven, I don't know, one point seven billion dollar valuation. And we, that one point seven billion dollar total valuation, we're asking for an increase of only a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. I'm off a little bit, but that's pretty close. So, and we could've gone quite a bit higher than that, but we didn't feel like we needed to and taxpayers don't need to pay it if we don't have to have it, so. I just want to explain that a little bit, so with that said, if we don't have any other input or anything from the public on that, I'm gonna give you one more chance, go in once, twice, three times, okay? With that said, I'm gonna close the public hearing and then I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn the public hearing and enter a special hearing in order to set the final tax request. And I'm gonna make that motion myself, so I'm making a motion to close the public hearing and enter into a special hearing in order to, to set the final tax request. So if there's no other further discussion, everybody in favor say aye. Aye, and motion is carried. So with that said, we're going to go. Okay, so we're in that special hearing tax request and I think I can just go right into these resolutions because these all have to do with that final request. Actually, that's not the case. I've got, I've got, I've got these resolutions, I'm gonna do them one at a time, okay?
I think you have to close the special hearing first. If anybody has a comment on the final tax request.
Do you see our final tax request, did anybody have any comments on that when I just explained to you what our final tax request is? With that, I'm gonna close the special, the special meeting on that and then I'll take the motion to approve that. I've got two papers here.
I'll make the motion to approve, to adjourn the special.
And I will, I will second, I will second the motion and then all favors of that say aye. Okay, now I can go into the resolutions, we have, we have three resolutions that go along with that. No, we have five, five resolutions.
Yes.
Five resolutions. First resolution, okay, resolution number one five seven two, book twenty-four, page seventy-nine. We're going to adopt the twenty-five, twenty-six budget as I have presented it. And then if there's, I'm going, I'm making that motion myself, so I need a second to make that motion. All, and with a roll call, for all in favor, say aye. Aye, motion is carried, so that's, now that is approved, so the second motion, second res- Okay, okay, let me read it, okay?
Okay.
The second one is, is, is to adopt resolution number one five seven three, book twenty-four, page eighty, to set the final tax request at an amount different from the prior fiscal year, which I explained, it's a little, it's a little different. So with that, I need a motion to approve that resolution.
I'll make the motion to approve resolution fifteen seventy-three.
Yeah, I'll second the motion, if there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye, motion carried. Next, I have a, a motion. I need a motion to approve resolution one five seven four, book twenty-four, page eighty-one, to transfer three hundred and sixty-four thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars from the general fund to the road and bridge fund. What that is for is we receive approximately one point eight million dollars from the state for our road department, but we have to match twenty-five percent of that, and that's what that, that is, that three hundred and sixty-four thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight is the twenty-four, twenty-five percent match. So Charles, I need a motion to approve that motion.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number fifteen seventy-four.
Yeah, I will second it, if there's no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Okay, this resolution number one five seven five, book twenty-four, page eighty-two. This motion, or this resolution is to transfer one million, forty-two thousand, two hundred and sixty-four dollars and thirteen cents from the general fund. In other words, the tax dollars are coming in to the general fund and then the general fund has to transfer that over to the self-insurance fund. So it's just a bookkeeping issue, so we can't spend it out of the wrong account, so she'll transfer this over to the inheritance tax, but we could pay premiums and claims and what have you. So I will make the motion to approve resolution number one five seven five, and I need a second.
I'll second that.
I got a second on that motion, all in favor, say aye. Aye, motion carried. Okay, then I will go into resolution number one five seven six, book twenty-four, page eighty-three. We're gonna transfer, this is a potential. It gives us permission to transfer three hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars from the inheritance fund into the general fund as needed. We've done this before in years past and we've never needed to do it, but we have to pass a resolution to make it so that we can, if we have to. So that would be moving money from fund number twenty-seven hundred into the general fund, which is zero one hundred. And I'll need a motion to approve that resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number one five seven six.
And I will second the motion, if there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye, motion is carried. Okay, we got, we all through that now, so, and we're pretty much on time, so budget process is pretty well completed at this point. So give us about another five minutes and we'll have, Don is next on the agenda to, and I didn't know, I didn't, I guess we don't have any questions, Dan, so we're good to go.
Yeah, unless you want me to go through it, so that's...
Aye, you've got copies, if anybody wants to see a copy of it, Dan's got copies of it, it's pretty thick. You can go, we've got five minutes if you want to go through it, Dan, I mean, but I, I can, I don't know how, how much to go through really. I just say, I would just say that we did have, we did have some funds, several funds that were left over in the different line items of different departments that, that are carried forward, so therefore, what their, what the taxes for each of those departments, there's only the general fund, taxes will go into the general fund and you've seen those resolutions, those are being carried forward, moved around, but they're going in the general fund. The county fair is taking in a hundred and nine thousand in new taxes, but they have a six hundred and twenty-six thousand dollar budget, so obviously, they have some reserves. The county health department had carryover also, three hundred and thirty thousand, so their, their, their new tax request is one fifty-seven. We also have a Hillcrest bond and also the jail bond, one forty-four and three eighty, so those are, there's no carry forward on that, we just, just for those bonds. So that is the only department, there's going to be any tax requests for, because all the other departments either had funding coming in from the state, federal grants, or, or they had leftover funds from the year before that we carried forward, so every department has been very, very frugal, very frugal. We could've gone a lot higher and they, and they didn't, so this is a good thing, kudos to all the county departments.
You can sign all that.
I know, I know. We got a couple more minutes to go, so, Dan, I think, I think we've covered it good enough, I think, okay? So we'll... What Charles and I are doing right now, we're signing all these resolutions that we just adopted. Okay, next item on the agenda is Don Wilson, he's our CPA, has a report to make on compliance as test station report and authorize the chairman's signature on the management representation letter. Your job, thank you.
On the compliance, um, adoration report. And on your ARPA funds, during this twenty-four, twenty-five year, you did expend seven hundred and two thousand dollars.
Okay, we went over that.
Yes, um, so if you combine the ARPA expenditures plus the child support expenditures, you were over the seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Right, okay.
Thousand dollars.
We need to align either, or align the log down on that.
Yes, yes, um, there is a provision within the federal law that states that if you exceeded seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars due to only the ARPA expenditures, you can just have a compliance audit on those expenditures. So I am proposing a separate agreement.
So that allows us to just do that? We don't have to do the one, the single line?
No, no, no. A single audit.
Cool. That probably won't ever happen again.
It, no.
The seven hundred and fifty, because ARPA funds are all used up, they were limited amount of time on that, so.
During the twenty-four, twenty-five year, the limit was seven hundred and fifty thousand. But for the twenty-five, twenty-six year, it will be increased to one million dollars.
Yeah, we'll never get there. Well, I mean, I thought we were gonna have to expense a lot of that, we went with that forward, okay? Okay, and this also, this also, this covers both those issues and also includes your contract for the following year as far as the CPA, right? Total fees for services set forth will be forty-five hundred dollars?
That's for the June period of two thousand twenty-five.
Okay, alright. That's the past season then?
Yes.
Gotcha. Well, that sounds good, so I'm gonna, I guess I'm gonna need a motion to agree to the terms of, of the engagement with Don Wilson as far as our CPA and account auditor.
I'll make the motion to approve the agreement with Don Wilson's.
And then I will second that motion. With a little bit of further discussion, Dan, I will, I will, everyone in favor say aye. Aye, motion carried, I guess I'm supposed to sign this, Don?
Yes.
Let me put down my title, what should I put down?
Nice job.
Can I put down, I was thinking you guys come up with something, where's the map?
Grand Puma.
Give them opportunity. That would be nice.
Our talks.
What?
We're being recorded.
Oh, there was evidence. And you probably want a copy of this too.
Um, I will make a copy of this, and you give it back. And then I'll give it back to her, right?
Okay, just do that.
And then I am wrapping the audit up today. So the final letter I need is a management representation letter. This is a fairly standard letter that essentially states that you have disclosed all of the information to me.
It would be recorded, so I can't say otherwise. We did.
I hope so.
Yeah, we did. Yeah, this is, this is a border plate deal.
Yeah, yes.
So this is wrapping up the audit for the last fiscal year now?
Yes.
Ending on June thirtieth of twenty-five, that's what this is, so, okay? So, no help, is there anything? Okay. I suppose I better have a motion to approve the management representation letter for the audit for the fiscal year ending on June thirtieth of twenty-five. I will make that motion. And then, okay, I got a motion, I got a second, but no further discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye, and we'll sign this, and our audit is complete, and there was nothing in there that we did good. You want this one too, and make a copy of it for her?
I can make a copy of it, and, and I have done. So that's all the information I have, unless you have any questions.
Did you find us a new auditor?
I'm sorry.
Did you find us a new auditor?
No, I didn't.
Make some, some suggestions, but this is your last year, right?
Yes, it is, yes.
So we have to have a new one come in this time next year. Appreciate all your service.
Thank you.
Wish you. Okay, hi, thank you.
Thank you.
That's the first time we've ever had a little bean. The next item on our agenda is at ten o'clock, it will be Ed Dunn, and he's here, he represents. West Central Nebraska Development District out of Ogallala. So, we hear from him, but since we have a time set for that, we can't start until ten o'clock.
The ten fifteen item, they are going to come a little early to observe. And then ten fifteen ask questions if they have any.
Okay.
It's not leadership in court, it's something like that, though. McCook engagement or category, no, they do it.
I don't either, you know, like. I know they do quite good stuff. They're just making a presentation, huh? Let us ask questions if we have them.
I'm sure so, they're going to observe.
Let's do an introduction first.
This is hill, oh god, it's gross.
Did you raise?
Yeah.
No.
I mean.
A slow steady walk, and we're still on the.
No, 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 twenty seven thirty, annual hill, maybe this is just a big problem.
Registration from eight nine, sorry, nine. So, according to that, we should buy a.
I think, I think we're close enough to ten o'clock, we were a minute off, but. Ed Dunn from West Central Nebraska Development District is here, he has to present the. An agreement for management of comprehensive plan. I will, I know there's one question that has come from the floor earlier that I will ask him. But we're going to try to limit the cross talk. So, and you'll see this, what, how this will go here shortly, so. Ed, if you want to make a presentation to us, that'd be wonderful.
Absolutely.
Copy of your agreement, you have a copy of your outline of services.
Oh, okay, right, so just in case.
Could use, Charles could use a copy.
Okay.
So if you give him a copy of it, I have it, thank you.
I guess one for Mr. Beans is gone as well. Presentation we're making. Here's okay?
Yes.
Yes, okay, alright, perfect, alright, so yes, Ed Dunn, I'm the executive director for West Central Nebraska Development District. I'll give you a little bit of background about myself and then we'll talk about the scope of services, obviously you have a professional service agreement in front of you. As well as a copy of the detailed outline of how we approach comprehensive plans. Fun fact, I'm not too, I'm from this area, pretty close, I grew up in Bartley. So, very familiar with Red Willow County, Bartley, Indianola, Cambridge, Rappaham, McCook.
Did you graduate there?
Um, I actually didn't graduate from there, I was in foster care, I graduated from Ogallala.
Oh.
Uh, two thousand and four.
Okay.
So I would have been the last class of Twin Valley.
Yeah.
Before they consolidated with Republican Valley and, and made Southwest.
That was an interesting year.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, it, I guess, twenty one years ago, but it seems like forever. Straight out of high school, I joined the military, the army, did ten years, three deployments. I've been married to my amazing wife for twenty one years now, in October, twenty one years. Happy wife, happy life, it only took twenty one years to get that one figured out, she's a Grant native, which is where I live. I knew we were going to end up in one of the two places, so again, happy wife, happy life, we ended up in Grand Nebraska, amazing place. I have three amazing children, my oldest is in college at Mid Plains in North Platte, my oldest boy, my daughter is a senior this year. And my youngest boy is an eighth grader, all wrestlers, in my free time. Any of us actually have free time anymore, but I, I coach wrestling at the, at the youth level and high school level. Umpire baseball, referee basketball. I'm, I'm a huge proponent of service organizations, I'm active in my rotary. And as well as the Lions Club, I'm actually district governor for the Lions Club this year, so, like to stay busy. And this fit, this fit what my lifestyle was, and that's service first, so coming to this organization was pretty easy for me. I s- I worked for twelve years on a ranch in Imperial, Nebraska, Jeff and Connie Privano, the Wineglass Ranch. Amazing people, left there to, to take a job that my mentor thought I should do, I had no background in it, but. I, I was the city administrator for the city of Grant for five and a half years, so similar to you or me here. Opportunity let itself to serve on the board for West Central, during that time I became very familiar with their mission. And had an opportunity to apply and was accepted to and hired to serve as the next executive director, so there's my five minute rundown of Ed Dunn. This, this area is very near and dear to my heart, my grandfather's just a county over in Hitchcock and Trenton, so. Again, this whole southwest corner is, is very near and dear to my heart, so. In front of you and provided to you for this packet, sort of what we, our take is on comprehensive planning. I'm starting, I'm not gonna read all these pictures, so don't, don't worry about that. I'm gonna, I'm gonna hit some highlights here, you guys have had them, you know, for a couple of days now, so, and, and. Commissioner Dean and I talked previously to this panel, so. Under Nebraska revised statute, chapter nineteen, counties have the authority to develop comprehensive plans that guide zoning decisions, consider population growth. Economic development and environmental sustainability, without an updated comprehensive plan, the county risks losing local control over where. And how large scale developments are located, and it is my understanding that your current comprehensive plan. Other than solar regulations have not been updated since ninety eight.
Ninety eight.
Ninety eight?
That was originally wrote, and there was one other one since then on a, on kind of a rural report. Several years ago, it's on our website, but I have the only, you got the solar one, I said.
Yes, yeah, so I was.
That was at least thirteen. The solar one was updated in twenty three, towards the end of twenty three.
So, yeah, it, this is a document that should be reviewed, viewed. This isn't just a document that sits on a shelf and collects dust, it's a living, breathing document, it should guide all of your decisions made in the county. As it pertains to planning, economic development, zoning, et cetera, so we're, we're due for an update. We're, we're due, we're definitely due for an update here. Comprehensive plan with Red Willow County provides legal authority, community vision, policy framework, and negotiating power. I'm gonna read a couple of these sort of verbatim, because there's a couple of good things in here. What is a comprehensive plan? A comprehensive plan is a twenty year vision for Red Willow County's future growth and development. It's a legal foundation for zoning ordinances and development regulations. A decision-making guide for county commissioners and planning commission. Policy framework addressing housing, transportation, economic development, land use utilities, and capital facilities. It is flexible and adaptive, can be amended as conditions change, what it is not. It is not a zoning ordinance, though it provides legal basis for zoning. It is not rigid or unchanging, it, it is not rigid or unchanging, plans evolve with community needs. It is not a barrier to development, it guides appropriate development to suitable locations. And it is not the only planning tool, it works alongside with zoning subdivision and other regulations. Which we're more than happy to take a look at as well as when we're reviewing the comprehensive plan, so. Why does Red Willow County need an updated plan now, obviously we talked about ninety eight being quite some time ago. Obviously the county has evolved since then, and we hope that it's going to continue to evolve into the next twenty years. Current development pressure in Western Nebraska, rural Western Nebraska, counties are experiencing unprecedented development pressure. Due to several converging factors, right now the most pressing seems to be solar and wind. But there's also confined feeding operations and infrastructure strain due to the push of the EV rollout. We've seen some rollback on that with this current administration, so I can tell you right now, our current infrastructure is. Especially in the state of Nebraska, but nationwide cannot support EV only, electric vehicle only, so. Red Willow's potential regulatory gaps, the existing comprehensive plan lacks specific policies. That have been updated in order to address large scale animal operations, industrial energy products, data centers and battery storage and agricultural land protection. This is saying that it's not in there, it's just saying that it needs to be updated, it needs to be brought into this century. I talked about CAFOs, confined animal feeding operations. Renewable energy development, wind energy, solar, battery storage, and then we've talked about the data centers and cryptocurrency operations. That are currently going up like popcorn on the east side of the state. Cryptocurrency and data mines seem to be the hot topic right now, along with the AI data servers. For chat GPT and all of those AI features that are now here to stay, they're not going anywhere. So, West Central Nebraska Development District, we can complete the process management, this is a twelve month scope of work. Phase one is foundation building, that's months one through four, phase two is plan development, that's months five through eight. Phase three is the adoption process, that's nine through twelve, and there's a lot of more tick marks in there that, that I hid, but like I said. No need for me to read verbatim from twenty pages here. What we offer, regional expertise, rural focus, so the majority of, of West Central Nebraska Development District. We're an eighteen county development district, we're one of the eight recognized economic development districts in the state of Nebraska. We serve eighteen counties, fifty eight incorporated communities, just a little shy of sixteen thousand square miles. We're clear up into Hooker, Thomas, clear down into Red Willow, Dundee, all the way over to Dawson County. So we have a very large footprint in southwest Nebraska. And that allows us to bring, the majority of our municipalities and counties that we represent are rural, and we do, we have more. Obviously in our district, we have Ogallala in our district, but other, other than a few of those hotspots, we don't. Our footprint is largely rural, our population average is eight hundred and below for the communities that we serve, that we serve, so. We have a deep understanding of agricultural communities and Western Nebraska development pressures, our regional perspective and knowledge how neighboring counties addressing similar challenges. We have connections with state agencies and, and technical resources, our local commitment and ongoing support beyond plan adoption for implementation assistance. Just address that and I'll talk about the investment analysis, the immediate benefits, and we can kind of wrap up here, and I'll answer any questions you might have. So, I, I said earlier, this is a twelve month process. At the end of that twelve month process, West Central doesn't just close its doors and turn, and change its phone number, we're, we're still there. At the end of that twelve-month process, West Central doesn't just close its doors and turn and change its phone number. We're, we're still there. So what we're going to offer beyond that twelve-month, uh, this twelve-month service, um, is. We're gonna come back to the table a year later, or maybe a little sooner, eleven months, ten months, somewhere in that timeframe. And say, hey, you've, you've lived and breathed the document for a year. Have you noticed anything that needs changing? Uh, we always, obviously ask for those to come to us immediately, so we can start making those changes. But we want you to have the document, work with the document, live with the document, breathe with it. Um, and then say, you know what, we noticed this area needs tweaking, or this language needs some, some text amendments. Uh, can we, can we get those in, uh, or can we get those changed? And that's free of charge. That first year, the review process up until that twelve-month period after adoption, um, we're gonna provide that service free of charge. We will review it one year after. And because we wanna make sure when we're done, we're handing you a document that that suits Red Willow County. We don't wanna hand you a document that just sits on a shelf and collects dust for the next thirty years, uh, almost thirty years, so. So, uh, yeah, so the investment analysis, um, twenty-five thousand dollars for long-term protection. The twenty-five thousand dollar comprehensive planning investment provides extraordinary value when compared to the cost of inaction. Um, this, this, without, counties without updated comprehensive plans may face, not, not you are facing, may face. Legal vulnerability, lost negotiating power, infrastructure burden, uh, community conflicts, and environmental damage. Uh, the immediate benefits is you gain legal authority. Maximum zoning and development regulation powers under Nebraska law. Negotiating strength with clear standards and community priorities for discussing projects with developers. Conflict prevention, established processes, and criteria reducing land use disputes. And then community confidence, demonstrated commitment to protecting rural character and property values. Uh, and then just lastly here, um, we have some, some regional examples. There's actually quite a few more here. I listed three that are kind of close to us. Scottsbluff County, their updated plan addressed renewable energy and agricultural protection. Chase County, they're not adopted yet. They're closed. Uh, they have new regulations for wind energy development they wanted to address. And then Keith County, they're in the process as well, uh, comprehensive planning for tourism and agricultural balance. Uh, we, we're not assisting those three counties. We are assisting the city of Oglealla, um, in conjunction with the UNO planning students, uh, to update their comprehensive plan. We are currently in the final adoption phase for the village of Elwood, uh, in their, in their comprehensive plan rewrite, and we wrote, we rewrote that. The village of Hagler, um, has, has hired us to assist them with their comprehensive plan, as well as Hitchcock County. So we have a pretty good network down here, uh, in, in our region for, for comprehensive planning. And lastly, I, I might just mention that, uh, this has, the comprehensive plan has nothing to do with nuisance whatsoever. We're not interested in doing nuisance in the county. And, and for the communities that do hire us, um, that power is provided to them by the Nebraska state statute. The logistics of trying to do nuisance in a county would be a nightmare. And as long as I'm executive director, that will not be an option. It will not be on the table. So you don't have to worry about nuisance, uh, nuisance abatement. This doesn't open up any kind of door to nuisance abatement. Just wanna squash that conversation before we start.
You do not do this except for municipalities?
Only municipalities, and even then, it's a, uh, application process, and we have to, we have to accept them, so. What question? I know that was a lie. Sorry.
Fine.
If I would have read it verbatim, it would have been even more, you'd probably have been looking for coffee.
Obviously, there are gonna be several things, and some of the stuff that you've talked about are things that have been, sort of, mine for quite some time. Um, we, we don't wanna get in a situation like Hitchcock County has with the data mining, and also the, uh, feedlots up close to town. We like to see that comp plan so that we don't have to worry about doing just like we just did this morning. We put a moratorium on data mining until we get our comp plan, because there's absolutely nothing in the comp plan about that.
I think that had been invented, didn't I?
No, it wasn't.
Right, we didn't even have cell phones, so. We had brick phones in the car, though.
So, uh, you talked about commercial development. One of the things I'm interested in is I believe that we have a limitation on what we can do as far as industry and rural areas, especially on highway corners. Has to be agricultural related. I think that's kind of silly. I think we need to, economic development for, even if it's not agricultural related. I'd like to look at that, make sure that's okay. Obviously, we, we've dealt with the solar. Um, we've made that amendment.
I'm sure that costs dropped, too.
We, obviously, we're taking care of the, uh, we want the crypto mining, the data mining. We want that in the comp plan. To protect our planning zoning committee. Conservation Eastman District, I think that's important that we look at. And I don't think that's as big an issue as it is right now, as it was with the prior administration, that that could come around again. Uh, we don't want federal government coming in and telling our landlords what they can and can't do with their land. Uh, so that would be a very interesting thing for me. Livestock needs to be updated. I'm all in favor of livestock, but we make sure that those, uh, people around them are not being impacted. Uh, so I know we, we, right now, we're half a mile east and west of a, of a feedlot. We're seven, we're three-quarters of a mile north of the south. Uh, wanna make sure that's still legitimate, because when those were roped, uh, we didn't have ten thousand head feedlots. We just, or, or more. So we need to look at that, and maybe there should be, I think the state actually, high livestock friendly, has different categories than what we do. So we gotta make sure that we're kind of in sync with that. Uh, I think that's kind of my main thing. What about, uh, also possibly CO2 pipelines? That could be a, an issue, I think, coming up, as we see more and more ethanol production. I think we're gonna see more and more CO2 pipelines. That needs to be, we just need to have a plan. We need to have some, how to deal with it. When we did our solar, fortunately, we got wind of it ahead of time, so we was able to put a moratorium on that. And then put a denim. It took us a year to get that a denim done, but we got it done, and we protected two thousand acres of tillable farm ground. Which Red Willow County is a farming area. And it made no sense to take two thousand acres of farm ground out of production just so they can breed two jobs. So, and that's what they offer us, so. We don't wanna have to, have to react to something like that again. Needs to be in the comp plan. We're gonna take it care of it. So those are my concerns. So. I don't, do you address any of those?
Yeah, did you have any, any, any concerns before I can address a couple of these, just sort of in brief?
No, I'll cover it there.
And, and obviously, if Commissioner Gans says anything, he's got my card, so he can get ahold of me. So specifically, you know, the livestock, I'll touch on that real quick. Numbers have changed. What we've seen is best practices have changed. Um, and the numbers are different than livestock-friendly counties than are, uh, just in the Joe Schimmel County down the street. Um, so we'll wanna make sure that we're looking at those, and I'll provide a comparative graph of, okay, here's the best practices, here's where we cook at, here's where I think we can be most, uh, where I think that, that Red Willow can be the most, uh, sort of in the middle, or, you know, playing both edges without. And you can always, you, you have to follow the statement of the law.
Yeah.
But you can always be slightly more restrictive than the statement of the law. Not suggesting that's the path we wanna take, but I just wanna make sure that that's, that's clear when it comes to, uh, especially those distances. Uh, CO2 pipelines, you're absolutely correct. Um, we've, we've got some of that going up in northern counties of our district right now that we're addressing. We are the planning and zoning administrator for Perkins County as well as Arthur County. And Arthur County's got some issues that we're dealing with, uh, for that, so.
That's why you won't.
Um, yeah, yeah. Solar, solar and, and wind, obviously, those, like I said earlier, those are the hot topics. That's what everyone did. Um, you were right to place a moratorium in, you know, in, uh. We've seen it as broad as all planning and development moratorium, uh, until an updated comprehensive plan is completed. I'm not suggesting that's what needs to happen here, because I've just sort of put a halt, a kibosh on everything. But I think you are right to place a moratorium, especially, uh, until you've got the wind, uh, sort of figured out. Uh, and then commercial along the highway corridor, um, nothing that we're not a stranger to there either. Um, I, I agree. I think in order for these rural counties to, to survive, yes, agriculture should be the, the, the driving point. We should always have that in the back of our mind. Uh, but what can complement agriculture, uh, in those districts? Especially along the highway corridor, where, where you're gonna see a lot of that traffic. Um, and that, that may be a new industry that, um, maybe it's the manufacturer that snaps the RTK yellow lid on the jump here.
I, I, I'm just saying that.
You know, so there, there are, there are definitely some options there for some commercialization along the highway corridor, um, that we can address in the future land use map, uh, and zoning map, so, yeah.
We might have other issues.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's the one.
And if you do, obviously, you've, you've got my email, so shoot me, shoot me your thoughts sooner rather than later. Don't let them sit on a piece of paper, so we can. Talk about them before we start writing this plan, that way we can make sure that they're in there and, uh, when we review that first draft, we're not scratching all the.
We obviously want you to make recommendations, too, that's something that we're missing, too.
Yeah, yeah, so it's not, uh, not necessarily missing. It's a lot, I, I did try to go over that in, in quite a bit of detail. Um, it, not necessarily anything that you're missing, I would say. It's just what, what you're exposed to currently because of the age of it, and, and obviously. Yeah, yeah, no, we will, obviously, and, and like I said, that just, that just goes along with the age of the document, not necessarily what you're currently missing in your document.
Okay, so we have a professional, we have an agreement here from your company to engage to write that comprehensive plan. Um, the issue that I'm gonna have, Ed, is that, this is a, I've read it, and Charles has read it. And it sounds fine to me. I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote to approve it when the time comes, I think. But for right now, it is a contract. We have to have our county attorney look at it. And so I am gonna make a motion to table that part of this presentation until our next meeting on October sixth, okay? So I'm making that motion to table that issue, channel it a second. Okay, all favor tabling the, the agreement with WCNDV until October sixth. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Okay.
So we will have Paul look that over and make sure that, and I, I know it's kind of a little, like, type of thing. It's the one you use everywhere. I'm sure it's fine.
I, you know, and I, I would highly recommend that, uh, everybody do that when they're, when they're entering into these documents. You know, he, he's there to mitigate your risk as a county attorney.
Yep.
Uh, he definitely needs to review this document.
He's to make suggestions, so we don't, and we turn around and do it anyway, and we get, we won't risk.
Yeah, no, and, and if you'd like to pass his inform, or my information along to him. Then, um, then he can send his concerns directly to me, and we can make those changes, uh, before it comes back to the board. As of right now, I, I will, I will not be able to attend that meeting.
That's okay.
Um, you guys, I don't know if I need to come back.
I don't think so.
Okay.
I'll think so.
I'd just, I'd like to touch really quickly on, on sort of the process again, too, just, um, left out, didn't left out, but, you know, we're trying to kind of get through this expedited matter. I know you've got other things on your agenda. But the other important part of this process is public participation. So we will look to hold no less than probably three, um, town halls, per se.
We did that on, on the solar also.
Okay. Um, yep, and, and that's just to, to gather input. A lot of it is structured around what's called SWOT analysis, so strength, weakness, opportunities, and threats. Um, this is a pretty widely adopted process. Uh, the second meeting is sort of centered around, uh, vision. So once we know those strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, uh, we can start to, to channel those into action items through a visioning process. And then that third process is to catch anyone who missed the first and second, uh, meetings, so. Um, and we like to hold those, um, throughout the county. So we'll, we'll be reaching out to, to, we'll have one here, obviously, um, but we'd like to make sure we're encapsulating the entire county and not just.
Okay.
Here, so, sort of our process.
Yep. So I think, I think it's advantageous here at this point, uh, with this choice. Um, I, I don't know, but I know we're being charged a, a, a fee as work progresses. And I think those costs would probably be even better, where you're doing jointly with Hitchcock and Hager, Hager?
Mm-hmm.
It's gonna save us some mileage and some, and I know our demographics are different. I know you're gonna do a lot of demographics, as far as population and all that, but land uses and things like that are probably, except for Hager, but. Pretty much the same.
I, I'm up to date. I, I, I had previewed some, some, uh, meetings prior, and understand there was some previous calls for a much larger amount, and I.
Yes.
I will, I will say that the reason we're able to come in at that amount, um, is largely due in part to the fact that we'll be working in this area on a regular basis. Mileage is a huge portion of it, obviously. Staff time is a huge portion of it. We're, we're able to do this, this critical planning process, you know, for, for that much cheaper than what you were quoted or estimated at. We don't, we don't carry a lot of the, we're, we're a nonprofit organization, so we don't, we don't carry that threshold of. As long as I can pay my staff and keep my lights on, we're good. We wanna keep it as economical as possible in order to provide the best product to our, to our counties and our municipalities, and that's how we're able to do it. Um, we, I don't have to worry about bonus or anything like that, or commission or nothing like that.
You guys also have funding from grants that you write yourself, and also have funding from some of the local businesses in the area, in the region, to help you out, like, for instance, banks. For instance, I think the Colesbank is one, that, uh.
Yeah, we have longstanding, longstanding, um, sponsorships from, from, uh, local businesses, especially here in Red Willow County.
That helps, too. Helps keep our costs.
And you have an amazing individual who serves on our board. Uh, we're, we're governed by a, a board of, administrative board, Amanda Ingle.
Who's that?
She's not in the terminal.
So you knew I was gonna do that, didn't you? Amanda Ingle sits on our board, and we're very happy to have her. Um, she's been a breath of fresh air, uh, even though her, her ten years has been short. But we're excited about what she's gonna bring to our board and, and the ideas that she's gonna bring, uh, pushing West Central into the future. Uh, this is part of our process of, of, you know, getting outside of the scope. The mantra that I've been preaching to my staff, uh, you know, hashtag we're more than nuisance. So this definitely fits the we're more than nuisance. Everything's gotta have a hashtag, right, a, a ticky talk or a snappy chat or something. So, um, yeah, we appreciate your time on this, and, and we'll be in touch between now and, and the. We'll be in touch between, uh, on October sixth. If your attorney has any questions, they can reach out to me directly. Um, i- if I need to zoom in at the next meeting, let me know, and I'll, I'll zoom in, but.
Did you get, did you get your good side?
I don't know if I have it, because. Yes, thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you. Could you, uh, Commissioner Gans give a comment?
Dingle.
Okay, all right, so you're, you're good on that.
Thank you so much. Do appreciate.
Yeah, no worries. I'm gonna hang out, because I'm a government nerd, so, um, that's why I was here early, so. Not only that, it gives me an insight into the county and what you guys are doing, so maybe we can talk about future grant applications.
Yeah, there you go. Well, we're, we got the tough stuff done, so right now, we're, we're running fifteen minutes late. We were doing pretty good until Ed showed up.
I should have led it. I'm a talker, so good luck.
It's okay, it's important. So we have a UNO extension here, McCook Agents Agreement Academy is here, and, uh, I'm not sure exactly what you want to present, but we're all ears, so.
Awesome. Well, thank you. Thank you for letting us be here. We're the McCook Engagement Academy. I'm Ben Dunn with Nebraska Extension. We're just a group of, um, five, um, McCook residents who are kind of studying and, um, and working on our leadership skills and, uh, trying to understand how we can best engage in, uh, community. And so, um, today, our, we're gonna, we're gonna attend a school board meeting and a city meeting, but we thought we better start with a, a county commissioner meeting. So this was part of it, was to kind of see how you function. The other side is, uh.
Wasn't impressed?
Is, yeah. So we thought maybe we'd introduce ourselves, and then, uh, there may be. So we thought maybe we'd introduce ourselves and then there may be a couple of us that have a couple of short questions for you and.
I'm Amanda Engel.
I know.
Molly Smith with the hospital.
We know that too.
Yep.
I'm TJ Renner with South Superman White CP.
I'm Caitlin Whitehead with Prairie Business Plaza.
Oh, yeah. I can see you get out. Mr. Flack, we made you president.
I gave, I gave a little heads up so that.
We didn't.
So I think we do maybe have a question or two that are short, and I might start us off with, would you give us just kind of a brief understanding of what is your, you know, what's your function? And how are you organized? How, what's, what's the structure?
Yeah. Our, our structure is we have three, three commissioners, which is kind of responsible for the budget and everything. But we also have a hell of a good staff out there running each of the departments, the county clerk, the county treasurer, our fair board and several others. And the assessors office, they're the ones that catch the most hell, I think. But of course, we are, the commissioners, we're, we're involved in all of those issues, but they pretty much take care of their part. But the road department is the one that we get calls on consistently, constantly. So Bigelow County is split into three different districts, and I take care of district number two, which is the Barley and Mill area. Charles takes care of parts of McCook that are north and back to the west. And then Ted is also part of McCook, also have part of McCook. And Ted takes care of down the south of Park, down in Eleven and Denver area. The reason why we each have a part of McCook is because they look at the population of the entire county and each of us should have roughly an equal amount of people. Well, if we all were just a rural area, we wouldn't have an equal amount, so we split McCook into basically three different pieces based on population. So that's why we're involved in that too. So everybody that were in the rural areas, everybody's in the city, they all pay a county tax. And we're responsible for Board of Equilization, which is sets the valuation. Those valuations are regulated by what we can and can't do by state statutes. So the whole idea, why it's called Board of Equilization is, the mission is to try to make sure that property is treated equally. So one person isn't too high, another piece of property is too low, it should be equal. So sometimes people protest that, and sometimes we're wrong, sometimes we make adjustments. But the folks that are getting those adjustments, those, those notices, they know as well as anybody what their property might be worth. But on the other hand, we, we have to compare it to everybody else and we have to follow state statutes. At that point, as you, we weren't here, we just went through the entire budget process. So we have to set a budget, a, a levy for taxes for everybody in the county. We have been able to lower our mill levy every year for as long as I've been here. Some, some organizations don't. They raise their mill all the time. But we've been able to be really fiscal responsible on that line. So we, what we, we operate on a lot more funds than what we just take in from taxes. So we, we're using grants and we're using fees and a lot of different things, so it's not all tax, it's not all tax issues. I don't remember the exact figures, but I'd say right now we're probably somewhere near a twenty-four million dollar budget roughly. But of that, about forty-six, four point six million is all is taxes. The rest of it is grants, fees and tons of that nature. So we've been able to hold the line pretty well. And I don't know what other issues you might have, but those seem to be the big issues that we're talking about the most. Roads, budget, Board of Equilization, valuations.
I'd like to clarify, sorry Randy.
It's alright.
The clerk and the treasurer and the other officials are not part of your staff.
Well, I don't, I, I, no, the staff is not to correct. They're all elected officials also. So they take care of their departments, yeah. All we do is look at your budget, that's it. So you don't know what, thanks for clarifying, that's not what I meant. That is not what I meant. I'm just saying basically, we don't have to worry about that, they take care of that, so it's not our deal. And so our main deal is the roads and, and all the other departments other than the elected officials.
Do you have time for one question? Anybody?
Do you want to ask?
Molly, you want to ask yours?
Okay, um, so I'm from New Mexico and my husband was a commissioner down there. And they have a county manager that manages like a Nate Schneider and then the commission, that, you know, he brings stuff and whatever. Why doesn't Nebraska have a management situation like that at the county level? Or does, or are there larger counties that do operate that way and we just have to do it?
I don't, I think very, very few counties do that. There might be in the cities, there probably is in higher population areas. Some counties have seven commissioners too, we got three. But our structure is different. We have a lot of elected officials that work for the county, they're elected, they handle their departments. So the, the idea of having a manager over everything would be kind of redundant, wouldn't it?
I mean, I think that like, you know, at, at that level, they, so I was here for one of the budget pieces. You know, and, you know, the manager would bring all of the reports together to you guys to make the decision. But then you guys aren't having to do that really nitty gritty work because it's being done by your manager. So that's, that's the point.
We hire CPA for that.
He was here, he was sitting over there. We put the numbers together, we give them to him, he trashes them around and figures it out in the next report back. And then we look at, oh, that's gotten worse, we gotta make some changes and it's, it's an ongoing process. We've been working on it for about two months.
Yeah.
Back and forth.
Right.
And, and it is nitty gritty, you're right, it is, but that's, that's what we signed up for. Like I tell Charles all the time, that's how come we get paid big bucks.
Right, it is, he's lacking.
I think that was my curiosity, is it seems this is one of those board, I know you're not a board, but you pull the seat that you have to have a lot of detailed knowledge about what you guys will put their head in. I, I would say that's not true of any of the boards that I've operated on or been a part of, but I guess I don't really get into the weeds more than.
Like a school board, for instance, you've got a superintendent, they're making the decisions, there's boards just damp, rubber stamps and.
Right.
We're a little different, I mean, we, we've got, we've got state statutes on County Purchasing Act that we follow. And if we don't follow them, Charles and I, if we do something online, we're going to get told about it, you know, our auditor's going to nail us. So, so far we didn't, we just had to report today, we didn't have any of that options this last year, so we're doing alright. So if it ain't broke, don't fix it.
No, it's, it's good. It just is interesting to me that it operates that way, but also it's a small, it's a smaller pool of people. You know, you're three people versus, you know, seven, like a commission has seven people.
On the commission side, I look at the city, for instance, they don't have any other elected officials.
Right.
Other than, you know, they don't have them like we do.
Right.
We just have to deal with Charles and I and Ted, we just deal with the parts that we're supposed to be responsible for.
Right.
And all the other elected officials take care of their divisions also, so. I, I just think, and I know some counties do, do that, but to me it just, it just, it just been in more money than we don't really need to.
Sure.
As long as we're willing to do it, we'll do it.
Do you think, sorry. Do you keep asking questions? Do you think that, like, could that be changed? I mean, if, if down the road you get a commissioner and you're like, that commissioner's like, I would love to be a commissioner, I want to be responsible, but I don't have time to be nitty gritty like you guys have volunteered to be, could you make a change? Could you make a change to have?
Yeah, we could do that. We could do that. So far we've.
Don't need to. It's okay.
We're smart enough, we can handle it.
Yeah, sure.
Right, Charles?
Well, and I like the fact that the people making the decisions are fully responsible. You know, if I do something that the entire county doesn't like, they can vote me out. You know, and not to, just as an example, if Nate makes decisions, he doesn't get voted out.
Right.
You know, that.
You'd have to remove him in a different way.
Exactly, yeah.
There's another example, I look at your local police force.
Right.
He's not liked it.
Right.
Our sheriff is. If he screws up, he's out, possibly sometimes, possibly, yeah. But yeah, that's a good point. We're responsible, we're, we're, we're all held responsible. Better, better get it right.
Yeah.
And Penny's been here for a while, she kind of holds her hands sometimes.
She needs.
Sometimes, once you know you have the board and slap it, you're already with it.
They won't let me have the board.
Good, I know.
Well, thank you for letting us observe you today and get a little more clarity on what you do and how it all functions. And, you know, as we kind of look at, you know, our engagement in the community and how we can contribute, just gives us a, a good opportunity to see how it works.
Good, your organization is wonderful. What you all do, you, you need to publish on yourself more, you know, there got to be people who know about you. But they just, there aren't a lot of people who know anything about the commissioners either, so.
Awesome, thank you.
Appreciate it. Yeah, I appreciate you, thanks for coming there and all of you. The next item, we're not too bad, we're only ten minutes off, so we're doing good. So the next item is Crystal for our county treasurer. She has a notice of eligible county sales.
I have a list of taxes from the 2023 delinquent taxes that were not sold at the public sale in March and will be eligible for county sale certificates if they are not paid by the end of this month. I sent out notices to all the delinquents on September 12th. And there are about, there were thirty-nine when I wrote that letter. So if they do not come in and get paid, then I will be putting on county sale certificates.
Okay, explain, explain real quick for other folks that, about county sale certificate, what's that process?
County sale certificate is a certificate that the county holds with no money being exchanged. They have to be advertised and not sold at the public tax sale. On a private certificate, county sale certificate gets put on and the county holds the certificate for three years. After three years, it being on the certificate with being unredeemed, the county attorney will foreclose on the property.
So three years from what date? From today?
From, three years from the date that I issue the certificate.
Which was just the other day?
It will be in October.
October, so three years from October.
Three years, October, whatever.
And they can come in obviously and redeem that at any time during that three year period, but they're going to pay a pretty steep interest.
They're going to pay a twenty-two dollar redemption fee and a fourteen percent interest.
So what if somebody came in here and, and that, that house that they tore in? What if somebody in the public comes in and says, I'll just go ahead and redeem those right now?
Somebody from the public? They can't, I mean.
Can't, can they? Not like a public sale, like ourselves.
Right, I mean, they can come in, like to purchase a certificate?
Yes.
They can come in and purchase a private certificate, yes. And then even after a county sale is put on it, and then, but, and an, an individual can come in and purchase the county sale.
And if that person, if any one of these people come in during that three year period, they have to pay that private person that picked that certificate?
They pay it to me and then I redeem it to the investor.
Okay, the interest, the fourteen percent. I think.
So once I issue the county sale, if, if somebody comes in my office and wants to purchase those taxes, and I assign that county sale to them, they will write me a check for the total amount due. And then the interest goes, continues up from that amount. So right now the county earns the interest and then later the investor will earn the interest.
Kenny Rose no longer with us. He went, he either went up, down, I'm not sure which way he went.
Who is it?
Um, Kenny Rose. Nicholas Dunn, I think that house that they tore down, the city took it over.
Okay.
Just.
Yeah.
Go through that, look, but I, just those two are just kind of getting there.
Yeah.
These are all, these are property taxes on real property.
No, that's all, that's all property taxes. These aren't personal property taxes, it's all real property.
Well, company doesn't do that, so I don't know. Okay, so all you're doing is presenting that list.
I'm presenting that list and then once the certificates are done, then I will prevent the certificates. I've given them to the thirty, thirtieth of September to come in and pay, so hopefully we'll get.
That be advertised in the paper then?
No, those have already been advertised.
And it's.
Yep, and I will not have to advertise it then. They will, so they will continue to advertise as long as they're on just a county sale. Because county sale, it, it's still not paid, whereas if an investor comes in and purchases the taxes for a certificate, they pay me the taxes, the county does not pay me the taxes, so they will still continue to be advertising.
So you're showing this as a potential asset piece in your statements or not?
No.
No, okay, cool. Like a revenue source, a potential revenue source. You're not stating it as a potential revenue source?
No, no, they, no.
Okay. That sounds.
Really, really, it'd be a pretty good deal to pay.
And what, do you want to explain?
Double, said back, seven percent interest and fourteen.
How much is it total?
Not very much, ten, probably fifteen.
Eighty-five hundred, eighty-five hundred dollars total?
That total or that's just the bottom?
That's a total. Oh.
We're making some money today.
Oh, it's clear, Charles.
Yeah, but what if they take out bankruptcy and.
That's everything, and there's no bankruptcies.
That would be a conflict of interest.
Well, there may be one out there that is currently bankruptcy. But the, those taxes were pre-bankruptcy, so they're still on.
They still have to, they still have to lean on the property, isn't it?
You know, I don't know what people in building back, get them out of there. So some of them may have a retention of the deal, some of them.
I don't think a lot of people have a clear understanding of the process. You know, we have Crystal explaining it to us, but.
Well, good luck with it. Thanks for the repo.
And you can direct me as well if there's something that, that you don't want to have the county. I mean, I've always just issued the certificates on everything that was remaining. This Atomark, I believe, they're, I think they're in the process of selling that property. It's the St. Catherine's.
Oh, yeah, but.
And it's just a.
They've got, they've got people looking at it, yeah, they do, but. Is that Atomark, is that the, is that the company? I mean, she's based out of Ohio or somewhere.
Pennsylvania.
Pennsylvania, I knew it over there somewhere. Yeah, she's been pretty hard to deal with.
Nate mentioned Thursday evening that they've got something very interesting.
Yeah, and if, if the person that were looking at it is pretty knowledgeable in this kind of stuff, it's not just some.
You know, some of them are small and it, it's, but it's not like it takes, I push a button and it prints the certificates, you know. So it's not time consuming. It's more time consuming typing out, getting the lists ready of the delinquent taxes than it is to put the certificate on it.
Do you have any leftover from, over the past three years leftover? That's never been.
No, everything that is leftover in the news, from the advertising list, I issue county sales on.
Okay, well, I think that's about everything we got today. We got out of here within the top ten, which is. That's because I was chairman. Yeah. Don't say that. I told him that last time I did this, we got here in twenty minutes.
Was he sick then?
Hey, I'll need a motion to adjourn.
Yeah.
I might have motioned, I don't know, maybe.
I'll second the motion. Everybody's favorite. Say aye, aye, next meeting is October the sixth, it's going to be a week earlier because of a holiday. So it will be October sixth for the next meeting. Be here or be squared.